Okay, I'd like to call this meeting of the Urbana City Council to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
City council members Ammons, Brown, Hazen, Jacobson.
He's entering the room.
Miller.
Here.
Roberts.
Here.
Wu.
Here.
Mayor Marlin.
Here.
Are there any additions to the agenda? Good. Seeing none, we'll move on.
Approval of minutes?
We have two presentations.
We have minutes from December 4th.
Oh, approval of the minutes from the previous meeting, December 4th, 2017.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second the motion.
Moved by Dennis, seconded by Aaron. Any addition or any corrections? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Pose same sign. Okay, those minutes are approved. We established there were no additions to the agenda. Moving on to public input, we have two invited presentations. We'll do those first and then we have requests from members of the public via our public input cards. And we'll go to those. First up is a presentation by Dr. Ruby Mendenhall on microaggression. And welcome.
Do I have a timekeeper?
Well.
Okay, so thank you very much for inviting me to come to speak tonight. And the title of my talk is racial microaggressions and the changing saying in U.S. society. And I want to acknowledge my co-PI Stacy Harwood and Margaret Brown Hunt and also the many students that have worked on this project. So in a very short amount of time, I'll just try to briefly talk about race and historical context of the changing saying, kind of what's at stake when we think about microaggressions, defining them, and talking about their impacts and then how to interrupt the changing saying. So I put this picture of Thomas Jefferson, our third president here, who authored the Declaration of Independence and wrote "We hold these truths to be self-evident that all men are created equal," at the same time that he felt that blacks were biologically inferior, held 607 slaves and just freed seven of them after his death. And so the monument that you see is at Monticello and it recognizes him for his achievements, but it also holds his contradictions. So all those names behind him are the names of the slaves that he held. And so I use him as an example because even as he was thinking about this country, this nation, he did not see it as a multiracial society. And these contradictions are often hidden in our history, but racism really is one of the building blocks that was used to create this country. And even today, the dynamics are still affecting us. And so what's at stake when we think about past racial racism and also current microaggressions is that they reproduce structural inequality, often in ways that are invisible. So you see this with assumptions about criminality, racial profiling of community members, hiring procedures where you may not, where you may have a diverse pool, but then who rises to be considered or to be hired, right, is often influenced by race. Complaints concerning mistreatment, how those are handled is often what's at stake. My research, we talked to students and they talk about what's at stake is that often they're told to drop classes, switch majors, often they withdraw from interacting with faculty, and in this way they miss out on key social capital that you come to the university to get. So all these things are often hidden, but they play a role in the changing saying. And so here I just kind of give a little background about the project. It started in 2006, 2007 academic year, and this is when we were having the debates about the chief and what do we do about the chief. And so we just came together and just started asking students of color, what is it like to be on campus? What do you feel the racial climate is? And then in 2011, 2012, we did surveys. Mary Ellis was very helpful in terms of that. And then we had 4,500 students respond. So the theoretical framework, when you talk about racial microaggressions, Chester Pierce, he's an African-American psychologist, and he thought about this term "microaggressions." And he was trying to theorize the changes and the relationships between blacks and whites post-Civil Rights era, right? So there were protests, things changed, but he's arguing again that some things were still remaining the same. So he defined racial microaggressions as interpersonal interactions that are subtle, stunning, often automatic and nonverbal exchanges, which are put downs of blacks by others. And Darryl Winksu and his colleagues expanded that. And so even when we initially started talking about this in 2006, 2007, students really didn't have a sense of the term "microaggressions," but when you explained what it was, it was like, oh yeah, I experienced that, right? I know what you mean by that. And so in terms of the definition that people generally use now, racial microaggressions are brief and commonplace, daily verbal, behavioral, or environmental indignities, and whether they're intentional or unintentional. They communicate hostile, derogatory, or negative racial slights and insults towards people of color. And this idea that sometimes they're unintentional is really important because people may not intend to, people may not mean to, that may not be part of their values, but they still happen, they still occur nonetheless. And then also just to make note that there are other types of microaggressions related to gender, sexuality, religion, ability, status, class, as many social identities as you have, that's as many types of microaggressions that you can have. And the thing about them though, they're difficult to identify, quantify, rectify, because again, they're subtle, they're vague, they have this unnamed nature. And then often when people try to express what happened, often it's dismissed or people may say, well, you know, I didn't mean anything by it, or you're being too sensitive. So the types of microaggressions, and then I'll unpack these, racial insults, invalidations, assaults which are similar to old-fashioned racism, environmental racial microaggressions. And when we talked to the students that completed the surveys, about 60% of them reported experiencing racism on campus. So unpacking it, racial insults, rude and insensitive actions or comments that insult persons of color by signaling that the person of color is considered inferior to a white counterpart, less intelligent, a second-class citizen, and more likely to engage in criminal behavior. And these are often unconscious. And so an example was during the 2008 presidential campaign, then Senator Joe Biden said this about then Senator Barack Obama. I mean, you got the first mainstream African-American who is articulate and bright and clean and is a nice-looking guy. And so he meant that as a compliment, but then there was this big firestorm behind that because he was evoking all of this changing saying from Jefferson, right? And the message behind that is that African-Americans generally are not articulate, are not bright, they are not clean, and we do not consider them nice-looking. And then in terms of racial insults, in terms of criminality, here's a quote from a student on campus. He said, "We noticed a police car that was following us for about three or four blocks. We had our seat belts on and we were not speeding. There was no reason for them to pull us over, but they pulled us over in Walgreens and it wasn't just one squad car, it was two. So not only did they pull us over, but now we're scared because we don't know what we did wrong. They came to the car, put your hands on the wheel, license and insurance. At the end, they said, 'Oh, we pulled you over because your back light is out,' but the next day we looked at it and it was not out." So racial invalidations are actions or comments that negate or ostracize the lived reality of a person of color. And again, these are often unconscious, like a person doesn't intend to do it. So people may say, when I look at you, I don't see color. And generally, you would think that's nice, right, that the person is not discriminating or doesn't have biases, but the message behind it is denying the person's lived experiences. And in the U.S., we have such different experiences that that needs to be recognized. And when you say you don't see color, a lot of times you're taking away all of that. So here's a Latina student. Her quote is, "Every time I would go into class, I would have to prepare for battle. I had to prepare to go in and defend myself. They would ask me, why and where did you get that? I was like, it's my life. I was like, do you need me to write a book so I can cite myself? If you want me, I'll do it. I'll cite myself, I'll give you a statistic." And she gave her last name. And again, the idea is that as people of color, they talk about their experiences, they talk about things that are not fair, things that are happening, and often the response is, well, how do you know that, right? What's the study? What numbers do you have? And often sometimes studies are done, then do another study. In terms of racial assaults, conscious actions meant to demean a person through deliberate and overt racial discrimination, which can be violent verbal or nonverbal attacks. And so again, I said, this is kind of like the old-fashioned racism. So for example, someone writing the N-word in the dorm elevator in secret, but the intent is to publicly make people feel uncomfortable and unwelcome. And then there's a quote from a black female student who she said, I went to, she went to class in the morning, the N-word was written in the elevator, and then she came back, the N-word was still there. She said, "I went to the front desk and I told them about it, and it was a Caucasian girl there, and she was just like, we've been hearing about that racial slur all day." And she kind of blew it off. We had another meeting and my RA said that every racial slur about every race had been written up there. So again, the initial writing, right, is the racial assault. But then as she tried to tell different people what it was like, then they dismissed it. That's racial microaggression invalidation, again about her experience. So environmental racial microaggressions, racial assaults, insults, and invalidations which are manifested on a systemic and environmental level, and it can have messages on a social, educational, political, or even economic level. And it's aimed at marginalized groups. So some examples, so again, the mascot, right? And even in town, when we see it on T-shirts, restaurants, hats, cars, wherever it's considered an environmental racial microaggression. Places where you have staff, faculty meetings, classes where all people are white or most people are white, and then where you have images of individuals and places of honor and all of the people are white. Again, the message is that people of color have not made significant contributions, that people of color may not belong in those spaces. And so here's a quote from a student. "In a small seminar class where I'm the only black person present, when someone starts to talk about issues related to black people, and not even in a bad way, there's that moment in which they look at you involuntarily. It lasts only a split second, but it is enough to remind you of your blackness and its under-representativeness within that context." So implications, right? It causes fear, anger, frustration, disbelief, right? Because sometimes, as Chester Pierce said, it's stunning, right? And it's awkward, you feel uncomfortable, unwelcome, isolated, sometimes invisible, but oftentimes hyper-visible. And then sickness, right? So there's research that shows that old-fashioned racism is associated with health issues, and now people are doing research where they're finding microaggressions are also associated with illness. From the stress, students talked about their fight-or-flight responses are being activated. Students talk about depression, they talk about eating a lot, they talk about just kind of crying. So lots of implications associated with this. And the impacts is that they send messages to individuals that they do not belong in those spaces, they reinforce white spaces, and may discourage participation in majors, city council, other places. And again, that contributes to a negative perception about campus or certain jobs or city council, maybe their responsiveness. And then the big thing, the most important thing is that society suffers when you don't have these diverse voices that can critique the status quo, that can say this is wrong, that can say that we may not be considering those things. And so you may lack innovation, you may not be able to move ideas forward. And again, when individuals try to speak up and say that something's wrong, and when they, again, kind of even may get microaggressions and kind of be invalidated, that's a really a really big way that society suffers. So in terms of interrupting the changing saying, kind of preparing yourself for ongoing and sometimes the uncomfortable process of undoing socialization. I mean, the U.S., we have been socialized in many ways around race, class, gender, you can name it. And so you have to undo some of that socialization and really be aware that there are some things I do not know about, there are some things I am not aware of, and to be open when other people try to bring that information to you. And also discussing your attitudes, your biases, how they may hurt others. Again, racial microaggressions, they have impacts, they have implications. And then this idea of creating spaces to talk about and understand racism and other forms of structural inequality, annual trainees and workshops around racial microaggressions, implicit bias, and all of that. So this is a great start, but then kind of more activities around that. And then also, we talked about not dismissing complaints, listening to critiques. We see bravery in the Me Too movement, right? The Times People of the Year. And then also, it's important to have grievance procedures, right? Students talked about that a lot in terms of the university, that it needs to be transparent. Sometimes they talk about they make complaints, but they're not sure where those complaints go. And it's important that people feel that they can make complaints because that constitutes a record of the climate of what's happening, and also it can serve as a record for whether things improve or not. And so also, annual town halls could be helpful in terms of discussing climate and issues that are to be reported. And I'll end in just kind of an acknowledgement of those who funded some of this research. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Any questions? We have a few minutes for questions.
So this is slightly off-topic, but I know you have written in the past on housing segregation. And we just don't have an ongoing way of monitoring or enforcing in Urbana anti-discrimination laws that are there against discrimination in rental. And I guess, I wonder if you have a sense of the extent to which such discrimination exists in Urbana? And in a city our size, I'll give a little bit of background. I was involved years ago in open housing movement in Shaker Heights, Ohio, which you're probably very familiar with. And so I was there for a while and active in that. But we are a very different city. We're not in a big metropolitan area. We can't, there, I would be a checker and go out to an apartment complex and present a comparable story to an African-American van. And yeah, sure enough, they'd give me a least of side, and they would give him a least of side, but a lawyer would show up with him. And, but we can't do that here. I can't, because we're too small for checkers to be anonymous. But I wonder, anyway, I've given too long a preamble. I wonder if you have thoughts about that, whether we, the extent to which you think we do have housing discrimination? What is the impact? And do you have thoughts on what we can do about it as a city our size?
So I don't have any research or data whether there is housing discrimination here, but I would assume, well, no, I'll just say I don't have data. And then I would assume that there may be some processes related to race and housing going on as it is throughout the country, right? I would say that this would be a microcosm of what's happening throughout the country. And I don't know with the housing audits. So I'm from Chicago, right? So I'm not sure, but when you say it's so small, then maybe you bring in kind of outside people, right? Like researchers or others who can do the audits with the matching pairs and going out and kind of seeing what those responses are. And then also, is there data being collected? Like when people do go out and they feel that they have been discriminated, like is there a place where they can report it and then it's investigated?
Human Relations Commission, Human Relations Office handles that.
Okay. And then what's, what do they say, the Human Relations Office, in terms of?
Then they investigate.
Do they report out so that people can know generally?
Aaron?
So is there any change that you see now that the RMAs and microaggressions have been discussed to the extent that they have on campus? What sort of changes do you see on campus?
Yeah, well, I'll say that, so students are now, many of the students are receiving training as freshmen about racial microaggression. And I think it helps both with their coping, and I think it also helps them to speak out against the microaggressions. But again, like I said before, in terms of something I think that the university needs to work on is when students report it, what happens? Because that's kind of where we kind of see a breakdown. But also nationally, you see these movements with Black Illinois, Harvard, Yale, and other places where students really are speaking out and trying to change their environment. So I would say that the training that they receive as freshmen, and then also because it's so much in the media now that it does make it more aware, but we still need work in terms of students feeling comfortable speaking out, right? Because during trainees, I talk about power analysis, and often students don't speak out as much as they want to because they're concerned, will it affect their grades, their relationships, and other things like that? And so one thing I suggest when I do training with faculty is to share power and tell students, if I say something that's offensive, let me know, right? And I tell my students that too. Let me know. You can put a note in my mailbox, you can slide a note under my door, you can raise your hand in class and say, Professor Mendenhall, when you said this, it made me feel uncomfortable. So I always try to talk about, like, letting people speak and being really open and aware.
Thanks. Well, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much for having me.
Our second presentation is Dr. Catherine Kraszewsko. And she's going to give an overview of the design project that her landscape architect 537 Master Design Class put together. And this is on the Boneyard Creek Ecological Community Design.
Good evening. I'm Marcus Ricci with the City of Urbana in the Planning Division. I would like to introduce Dr. Katherine Kraszewsko. Katie is a landscape designer and a designer-in-residence in the Department of Landscape Architecture at the University of Illinois at Urbana-Champaign, where she researches how low-impact development practices and policies as means towards sustainable stormwater management. When we broached the idea of having the graduate students in her Landscape Architecture Master's Design Studio use the Boneyard Creek as a real-world focus for their studio project, Katie was excited about the opportunity to give her students a local, real-world problem to solve. After having reviewed some of the students' designs at their gallery event last week, I'm very impressed with their innovation and ambition, and they will be very valuable ideas for the Boneyard Creek Steering Committee to review and consider as they begin the planning process. I'm very happy to say that Katie has agreed to continue her participation as a member of the Steering Committee, and we are already discussing policies for working with her 2018 graduate design studio.
Thank you so much for having me. I'll just go over briefly what the course covered for the new portion of Boneyard Creek, so that students described it as the missing one-mile portion that has yet to be designed, so from Lincoln to Main Street, and trying to connect into some of the themes that were developed in the 2008 plan of Boneyard Creek and explore some design interventions of their own. The goal of the studio was focusing on ecological design within the City of Urbana and Champagne, Champagne County at large, and the state of Illinois, and how to connect to larger ecologies and native species within an urban design plan and urban design concept. There were 12 students total in this course, and each student did an individual design project with an individual analysis. I'll have a collection of their complete works at the end of finals week, their assigned final. So I'll be able to share more detail with the city as we move forward. Originally, we started with a case study looking at the site itself and how it fit into the larger state of Illinois environmental conditions. We looked at, we took a watershed analysis of the entire state and to see how Boneyard Creek fell within that and what were some of the issues that could be amended within the design process. Again, we looked at some of the circulation concerns of the area, the existing vegetation proposed, and how proposed vegetation could fit in to the larger concept. What were some of the existing programming elements within the surrounding area? What is the goal that this trail system could connect into from a social perspective? And how to connect to the larger themes within the City of Urbana? What did the permanent community look for when they're using this trail system? And how to draw some of the students into downtown Urbana to give more of a vibrant downtown experience? And also, it's looking at some of the native fish species that once thrived within Boneyard Creek and native plant species, and how to connect again to that larger ecological community. We looked at temperature patterns and weather and just traditional site analysis for landscape architecture, and how to work with existing structures and shadows when we're laying out our trail system. And looking at what is the personality of Urbana, the city, and how to tie into things that the native population would enjoy using within the site. So the site was, depending on the students' themes and goals, the site was divided up into four to five segments, starting at Lincoln and connecting to Main Street where the 2008 plan picked up. A majority of the site runs through residential area, and so looking at the narrow spaces, the students were encouraged to use as little of the existing property as possible so that we wouldn't be inhibiting on a lot of the homeowners within that area, but also to show the potential of what this space could have should any of that property come available. So this is just an example of one of the students' work, some of his design proposals for Segment One, which is from campus on Lincoln Street, and what that looks like in sections. Not, the goal for all of the students wasn't to daylight the entire creek, focusing on some areas that could be daylighted and other areas that use the existing channelization and try to encourage them, ecological habitats and interactive space within that. Segment Two was a much narrower space, and a lot of the students maintained a very, very limited section in their designs, and a few of them chose to expand that area out and remove any of the existing properties, current uses. Segment Three is a little bit more of an interactive space. There was a little bit more open areas for them to play with. This student in particular wanted to utilize some of the history of the existing creek, so a lot of the steel structures that you see on top of Boneyard Creek, how to use those as an artistic element and something, instead of looking at them as an eyesore, but thinking of ways to enhance them and reuse them and recycle them. And just creating small pockets of space within that narrow area rather than taking up large swaths of land using a lot of narrow space. Segment Four and Segment Five, there was a little bit more land to play with, and so you'll see a lot of constructed wetlands in that area, more open park space, and wider creek beds for most of the students. And then Segment Five is what connects to Main Street and ultimately to the 2008 plan that's already in action. Like I said, each student did their own projects, so there's different themes and different design proposals that you can see in each one. And sometimes having too many design ideas to choose from can be a difficult place to start because you either like them all or you don't like them, and so start from scratch. So what I wanted to do with this initial studio is to use the ecological framework and use Boneyard Creek as a testing ground and hopefully get a little bit more feedback on the Steering Committee and what the City of Urbana would like to see for this missing mile and the following studio in 2018, give a little bit more detailed direction to the graduate students, and how we can maybe hash out some of these beautiful, large, scheme design plans. um and how we can maybe hash out some of these beautiful, large scheme design plans that might not be financially accessible at the moment into something a little bit more concrete. And um like I said, I, I'll have their collected booklets of all this analysis that they did and these beautiful design proposals um come Wednesday, that's the due date. So I'll be able to share that um information um with the city however you all would like to receive it.
Any questions for Katie? Thank you very much. Bill?
Yeah, thanks. Uh, uh, we got the PDF today, so I haven't had a chance really to look through it.
There's a lot of information.
It looks beautiful, I'd really like to spend a lot of time looking through the, the designs. I know one of the challenges in that segment before, did you read the early, the nineteen seventy-something plan?
Yes, we did.
And one of the challenges is the trade-off between how much land you take to the sides in order to get the slope right versus putting it underground. And maybe, I think in that plan, they had it underground, but they also had a stream on top of it, basically, a stream on a stream. Are, are all those concepts kind of in this as far as the, the trade-off? Or is it, or do any of them kind of quantify how much property you'd have to buy on the sides if you didn't want to put the stream under the stream?
Well, each student um took a look at the land and wanted to use it in a different way. And so each project has a different goal as far as how much land they would use. But each of them was assigned to do a stormwater analysis. So whatever property that they were removing to make sure that the stream could maintain that amount of, the same amount of volume that it's currently engineered for. So all of the stream channel uh that has been changed anyway should still meet the same stream volumes that are, is flowing through there. So as far as how much land, again, that's, that's a project-by-project base. And, and again, as we move forward and we have a little bit more concrete direction of what land will be available and, and how much space that we're working with, rather than um just giving the city and having the students give the city a, a trail system that goes through there, kind of looking at some of, all of the options that could be here from a design perspective.
It looks like, at least in one of them that you flipped through, it looked like you had the public property delineated.
Yes, yes.
There's a lot of Urbana property, Urbana-owned and Park District-owned and stuff like that along there.
Exactly.
Did you um also try to quantify how much stormwater detention could be available there?
Well, so we worked with the, what was being used uh currently for Boneyard Creek. And anything that was done should be able to accommodate even more than that. So nothing was uh proposed that would um accommodate less stormwater in there. We wanted to keep with the, the maximum amount. Um, as I know, we, we discussed flood, flooding wasn't a concern for this area. But we wanted to um provide as much opportunity for water quality and wildlife habitat and, and do that within the parameters of the existing conditions.
Okay, great, thanks a lot.
Thank you. Eric?
So I guess one of the things, um, you know, those big retaining walls were built years ago before um, before the big uh basins were built in Champagne upstream.
Correct.
So the uh, so, so that mitigated a lot of the, the water rushing down. And I, I think probably right now, those walls are way overkill. But it, but I don't know exactly how much.
They are for a majority of the year, even without that mitigation in Champagne. For, for a majority of the time, though, that volume never reached the limits of those walls. But they were done as a, a brilliantly engineered pers, uh, from that direction. But as far as um an ecological concern, it, it kind of fell a little short, so.
But one of the problems with that, I guess this is, people debate this, but I, I'm sort of persuaded on, on one side. I think there's a lot of subsidence subsiding of the land next to the Boneyard. And I believe the story that the soil is coming out underneath those walls. And so, uh, so everything is collapsing up above. So do, do your um, how much did, in, in the designs that your class has done, uh how much uh concern has been given to the, the hydrology and the soil mechanics?
The hydrology, uh, not necessarily the soil mechanics, but the existing soil conditions and for preventing any kind of erosion in areas where there would be widening of the string bank. All of that was taken into consideration in their design proposals. So what slopes met for the least amount of erosion and soil loss. Um, we, we wanted to stick with what was native to that area. What is the, the pre-existing conditions of the soil? And what did the, how did Boneyard Creek? It's been re-engineered in so many different ways that we can never really bring it back to its full uh glory, which is probably for the best with all the urbanization that's happened in that area. But what can we do to um revitalize some of the native plant species and, and habitat recreation?
Dennis, and then Jared?
Uh, I was just curious, did you, uh, did your students have to give presentations? I'm assuming on, on this stuff, and they already have, I'm assuming what their projects do. Next semester, you should invite us to any of the interested parties to come and listen to their presentations. I would have liked to have heard what they had to say.
Absolutely, and then that was something that we had done this semester. Um, the invitations went out a little bit too late to get out to everyone on the um council. We, we tried to combine all of our studio presentations at the same time. And I think that fell short, that each student, e, each studio's theme wasn't really um showcased. And so something like this, that is so local to the area that almost all the students are familiar with, regardless of what their studio theme is on. I think next semester, it would be much more beneficial exactly to invite more.
Sure, I would appreciate it, thanks.
Dennis?
What a, what a great variety of um concepts came from the twelve students. And when I went through the, uh, walked through the presentation at Temple Beale Hall, I, I was struck by um the logical uh application of their projects to the landscape. One of the things that we had talked about once earlier was not to over-design, but to make it a kind of realistic approach. And I think the students really accomplished that. One of the um uh more difficult ways of, of the connectivity as far as it being a trail is um crossing multiple streets. And um some of the students talked about um access points into the creek bed um pathway. Is that something that might be developed a little bit more, maybe in, in your next project? Maybe I'm not, I, I found it interesting that you're interested in doing this again. And um with some of the input from the Steering Committee that's being formed now, we might become uh yet closer to a plan that might actually be considered perhaps for adoption. Right now, I see um the, certain segments of each student's work being very fascinating. And I was, uh, I was amazed, I hadn't even thought of um the possibility. One student included an ice rink where the water basin uh could be tapped during the winter for skating. And I thought, man, I've never seen that in any concept plan that I'm aware of. What a great idea, if we just have really cold winters. That would be a great thing to add to the community, an ice, an outdoor ice skating rink. Heck, you could skate up and down the creek if you could um get far enough. So um, so I'd like to hear a little bit about um what's coming for you? If you, uh, what, what plan, uh, will it be also an ecological design plan? Or would it be a different class focus if you did this in two thousand eighteen?
Uh, this, this um phase for the graduate students is the ecological phase. They, they've done site design and they've done regional planning. And this one was for local ecological design. So that, that theme will probably continue on. But I think when we hear a little bit more from property owners, I think we met some of the property owners in, in one portion. But how many, how much square footage that this design is dealing with right now? For this project, I didn't give them concrete property lines to deal with. And so they were kind of working with, within their design uh creativity. And so I think moving forward, what I'd like to see next semester, next year, is to have a little bit more concrete understanding of what, what land we do have to work with and, and what is the, the practical boundaries to which the design can.
Yeah, and, and having a plan such as this allows us to approach organizations, perhaps, uh, this could be coming up in the near future, not near future, but maybe in a year or two, that we can actually start perhaps seeking funds for land purchases, until lots, city property, working with the Park District, which lies, which uh Philip Center lies right along the pathway. And engaging them would be a fascinating next step as well.
I think, I think it, things like this, it, there's a lot, quite a few number of studies that show how much this increases property value anytime there's a green belt or a linear park that goes along. Only good things come out of that, so.
Thank you.
Thanks, Aaron?
So Katherine, thank you for coming and to doing the presentation as well as doing something, using your platform to also involve the students in city government, right? Or helping beautify the city, which I think is, is super important. And like what Jared said, I think we would be interested in coming to see the presentations. But I also think it's extremely important for them to come here, right? Uh, and to be involved for college students or who are living here to be involved in what's happening locally or the local politics. So I just hope you would consider bringing them here also to do their presentations.
Absolutely, thank you for your invitation.
Thank you.
I, I asked the same thing, it's the end of the semester and they've all left for home. So we'll just have to schedule this earlier in the semester next time. Well, thank you very much. Okay, we have several other members of the public who wish to provide public input. Um, Marlon Mitchell and James Kilgore. Mary Alice?
Um, I just wanted to say to the council and to the members in the audience that I do have a plan to make a motion to uh remove the section on front yards um on Attachment A and Page Seven, and parking changes in Table Eight, Number Seven, that are part of the zoning ordinance. Um, so I'm going to request that those be removed from consideration and set back to committee uh for January twenty-second. So I just wanted to say that before we move forward, thank you.
Was that your motion or just, no?
Statement of intent. Okay. Go ahead, you have five minutes.
Okay, thank you. Um, good evening, everyone, and thank you for uh giving us this opportunity to speak. A little less than a year ago, we came before the Urbana City Council um to talk a little bit about our work as First Followers Reentry Program. And we were encouraged by Bill Brown, I believe it was, to go ahead and apply to the Urbana Social Services Fund for, funding for one of our programs, which we did follow through on. And we're happy to report that we not only succeeded in getting the grant, but we've, we're about halfway through completion of that program. We've, we have a program which we've called formally a Workforce Development Program. It's targeted at eighteen-to-twenty-four-year-olds. But informally, we've called it Go Mad. And that MAD stands for Make a Difference. And we, we talk about making a difference at the personal, individual level. We talk about making a difference at the community level. And we talk about making a difference at the, at the society level. So we, we're quite, we're quite pleased with, with what's happened so far. We have, we've brought a, predicting what Aaron just said, we've brought two of our students with us tonight, Alan Baines and James Franklin. And one of them will also speak to you about his experience with, with the program. But we just really wanted to come here to let you know that your, your money is being spent uh very well, we think. And we hope we'll have um, you know, some impact on some of the issues that we were trying to address with this program, some of which came up in even uh earlier in Professor Menon Hall's presentation around the issues of particularly the criminalization of youth and trying to combat that stereotype and stigma, but also trying to provide opportunities for people who have not been given a, a lot of opportunities for economic and educational development in the community. So um Marlon's going to speak a little bit about what we've actually been doing. But I just wanted to, to join him in thanking you for giving us this opportunity.
Yeah, so uh, can you hear me?
Speak into the microphone.
All right, so uh, again, thank you all for uh providing the space and also the funds, the seed funds to get the Go Mad project up and running. This is something that James and I and the rest of the leadership of First Followers sat and down. And we kind of developed over the last eighteen months. So uh, again, we appreciate that because one of the things that we wanted to do with the project was to bring a kind of narrative to what we hear too many times uh on the news about uh certain communities of folks that are on the wrong side of law or heading that way. Uh, so just to talk a little bit about the programming piece of it, and that really, I mean, I, I won't go into all of it, but one of the things that I, that really stood out for me is uh today we had an exit interview. Because as James mentioned, today or last week was our final day of the first phase of it, which was an eighteen-week project. Starting in January, second week of January, we'll pick up again and we'll have another six weeks. But the first thing, and with the first phase, one of the things that I really was excited about is this, this thing about the educational piece. Cause many of our, our participants, they, they are, they may not have engaged with the traditional education system the way that we all would like to have, you know, have it work. Uh, so with that being said, one of the things that I got from the exit interview is that how excited they were about reading and being able to participate in literature that really, that, that involved them. And what I mean by that to, um, and one of the things that we wanted to concentrate on is the identity piece. Because there's one thing to think that you, you're, you're, understand your own identity, but how is other people looking at you? How do, how does society look at you as a whole? So we spent maybe a week and a half just, you know, through literature and then also presentations and movies and different things like that, just understanding where we are as a society uh this day and age. Uh, so that was really encouraging for me because many times we hear about the lack of literacy. But there's a kind of narrative to that, and uh that was my hunch. But at the same time, just the eight weeks that we went through that whole process, that was, that came to the surface and, and it was resounding. So the next half, I'll just talk about the next half of the uh project. So James and I, we were gifted a house maybe, maybe about a couple of months ago. And one of the things that we're using this is for a learning lab. And what that means is that we're introducing the, the group to workforce development skills as far as the construction trades. Uh, we've had throughout the first half of the project, we brought in people from the work, uh, construction trades into our space to talk about, you know, what they do, what it takes to get to where they were, their, their day-to-day activities and how that all um shook out for them. Uh, one of the things that we really, really want to do is bring people in the space in a room where that they can see themselves doing some of the things that they need to do to acquire gainful employment. So that's some of the, that's one of the things that we also have concentrated on. So going into the second phase, I know I've got about ten seconds here. So going into the second phase of it, we're, we're gonna be in our learning lab. Um, and what we're gonna do is demolish, demolition and gutting the property. Then after that, the guys or the participants of the group, they're actually gonna design what they want the finished product to look like. So we're excited about that.
Excellent. Thank you. Mary Alice?
Thank you for coming and giving us an update. Um, I'm curious, how many people are, are participating, participated in Phase One?
So we had ten participants in all, uh, we had a couple of guys that were twenty, twenty-two-year-olds, but most of them are nineteen and twenty.
Okay, and then how many, are, are those people gonna move to Phase Two?
Yes.
The same group, and then are you gonna be taking in another round? Or are you just moving through the phases with that same cohort?
So one of the things that we're thinking about, and we haven't decided on that, initially, we were gonna take on a second cohort. Uh, but one of the things that we're thinking about now, and during this break, James and I, what are we gonna do is sit down and think about just further developing the relationship that we have with our, this first cohort to make sure. Because what happened with the exit interviews, you know, the enthusiasm that they have, and they, they're wanting more, more of certain things. And so by being just the first eight weeks, there's a lot of things that we kind of left on the table and moved on to the next subject. And some, those are some of the things that we can come back and uh kind of pick up and have further discussions.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Um, we have Alan Bain. Would you like to come and speak? He has a card.
How y'all doing today? My name is Alan Baines.
Speak into the microphone so we can hear you.
My name is Alan Baines. Um, I remember like the first day when I met Marlon. Uh, I was at the U Summit in Champagne, I believe, or Urbana. Uh, finna get my felony uh petition to be sealed. Um, happened when I was sixteen. Uh, learned my lesson, um, and by this program, I'm here today because I didn't know a lot of things. I didn't know politics, uh, how the city council works, waking up five in the morning, hearing gunshots, who hears about that, which is the district people. I didn't know about that. I didn't know that it was a lot of districts out here, uh, and they have a saying to it. Um, also didn't uh know any like people or powerful people that's in Champagne. And just getting the knowledge of it by being in Champagne or Urbana period is good. Um, I tell a lot of friends, yeah, come to the city council. Uh, look, I'm famous, I'm on the news, but I'm on the news because I'm making a stand for this generation. It's not true all generation, y'all are probably finna retire, it's our generation. Uh, what affects or how, what's the cause in our neighborhood is on how we do it. But it's also not just on us, it's on the people that doesn't give us jobs, that doesn't know how to feel to get their hands in the mud, that really get their hands in the mud. Like these people, uh, they put their heart, their effort, their time. Uh, they quit their jobs just to make sure we can get our reading, our mouths, um, help with our kids, uh, what else? Uh, just jobs, period. And by me being in this program, I learned that there's people out there that will help you, but if you don't put in the necessary steps to get the help that you need, then you're not gonna make it nowhere. You're still gonna be on a corner, on a block, uh, no job, at McDonald's, eight twenty-five an hour. But they can give you somewhere from eight twenty-five to, how about this, twenty-seven dollars an hour if you go on ahead and join this program, succeed in it, learn the skills, the requirements, license, uh, GD, high school diploma. learn the skills, the requirements, license, GD, high school diploma, pass a drug test, and all the steps into where, you know what, I have achieved some, I did some. Now I don't have to pick up a gun and shoot. I don't have to worry about, oh, well, yeah, let me call this lift to go pick up my son. I have a car, I have reasonable transportation to get from A, B, and C, and D, even all the way to Jamaica if you want, because I have a stable job. I have met the requirements to, you know, I could do this now because I know the steps in order to take. I do not want to be working at McDonald's. I actually quit my job at making eight twenty-five an hour because I'm not worth eight twenty-five an hour. Let me just put it like that. I'm not. Nobody is, period. And that goes off into the classes that we learned, like Black Lives Matter, there's another set of people that came from the U of I, you know, talks about history and everything. It's a system, and that I think I believe it's time for the system that needs to change. It's not about this, the color, pink, purple, blue, white, black, none of that. It's about being fair to everybody in the community, everybody in the state, in the whole world. No one should be left out alone, period. I also learned that through this program that it's also like, it's fun, it's creative. I learned about what all the people is doing in my program, how they do it, why they do it. It's not because they trying to get some money out of it because if if obvious that wasn't without, they would still be at craft, they would still be doing whatever they is, making seventy-five thousand a year or sixty thousand a year, but they said, forget that, I'm gonna work with them. There's a lot of people out here that has these types of jobs, that's powerful, HR, that said, you know what, I'm not going over there with them. I don't want to be with them. They can't pass the drug test. They can't do nothing. They can't even get to work on time. But guess what? I'm going to show y'all, I'm going to prove to y'all, I could take these people, these young kids, that y'all think that can't change, and you know what? I'm gonna bring them up. I'm gonna show you that this this town, Urbana-Champaign, can change because I'm going to show you how to get my hands dirty. I'm going to show you, and I'm going to be the one that you could blame if anything messes up. I mean, when you taking on that type of power, it's like Spider-Man, great power comes great responsibility. You know what I mean? So when you doing that, it's it's not that you getting all the center of attention and you famous, it's it's showing the world and the community, guess what? I'm going to be the one that can stand up and say, I got their back. And they need help. Everybody needs help, including me, you, everybody. And this program is showing young kids that, guess what? You got hope. That's all we need nowadays is hope. And I thank you all for hearing me out and everything, so, yeah.
You're an articulate role model.
Thank you.
Aaron?
So, Alan, right?
Yes.
Thank you for coming, man. And I appreciate your passion. I wanted you to just talk a little bit more about, so Marlon said that you all were getting excited about reading because I see it as a very critical piece for my change, and I think some of the other gentlemen who are in the audience today will attest to the importance of of reading and how it affects your your mindset and your change. I just wanted you to take a few seconds to talk about that a little bit more.
The reading is like this, the reading comes from, when you in class, you not being taught what you really need to know, right? So like for me, or a lot of the kids that's in the program for us, it's you go to class, it's you learning this, you learning that, and you move on if you don't get it regardless. But in this class, guess what? It's you learn this, you learn that, wait, I didn't get that. Pause. Let's everybody get that. If everybody get it now, everybody's on the same page. Everybody in in school is getting the same type of help that they need in reading. You don't see that most days. You see A, B, all the way to D, all the way to Z, and guess what? They missed out on fractions, on this, on how to pick up a book and continue to read. And you forget about the importance of reading. Anybody could read this, but it's a that's what makes reading fun. School is not fun no more when you can't or when you skipping. You can't like imagine what's going on. If you don't, if you can't read, you can't imagine, to me, period. And this program helps you, you know what? Everybody, we is not leaving this course until everybody know how to do fractions. Everybody know how to read this full chapter. Everybody know how to measure. And we need measurement if we want to succeed in the program for the next six weeks that start in January. That's in the math section.
Thank you, man. Appreciate it.
All right.
Stay at it, man. Stay strong.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Steve Ross?
Hi, my name is Steve Ross. I'd just like to speak to one of the items on your agenda, ordinance twenty seventeen twelve seventy-four, zoning. And even in that zoning, a very small part of it related to setbacks of property. This is an issue that's come up pretty often. One of the more recent ones, not perhaps the most recent one, is, I should say, I live at six oh nine West Green Street, just down the block, seven the seven hundred block. There was there's there's new construction going on, and there was quite a, well, from my point of view, there was quite a bit of controversy about how close the buildings could be to the to Green Street. What was the setback? My understanding is that the current approach taken by city staff is to assume that when a structure will be destroyed to replace it, that that the setback can then be set to the minimum amount for the for the zoning. That's what it's it's taken into account as opposed to looking at what it really was, what the existing setback was. So my hope is that we could change that so that the staff would instead take the existing structure setback into account when they're calculating the allowed setback for for the for the for the structure using the average across the whole block. So that's that's it. Simple request. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul Debevec?
Debevec.
You have five minutes.
So I'm Paul Debevec. I live at seven oh eight West California. I also want to talk about the setbacks. So every screen is a little different, sorry. So setbacks first. In the setback calculation, this is from the zoning ordinance, so all these districts here, the required front yard shall be the average depth of existing buildings on the same block are fifteen feet, whichever is greater, but no more than twenty-five feet. But in nineteen eighty-six, Bruce Walden wrote a policy to the policy document, and it says that in calculating the average setback for R one through R four, the following should be followed. The setbacks to be redeveloped or demolished should be calculated fifteen feet. So Walden equates a property which is to be demolished, think in Phil, with a vacant lot, and he includes in this policy R one through all four. Clearly, in eighty-six, other zoning categories did not exist. And Community Development says that this policy has been followed since that time, but it's never been brought before either the Plan Commission or City Council until this December. So in the memo, here are two examples that Community Development gives. Here are five lots, properties are all at twenty-five feet. You calculate the average as if they were there, and the required setback is twenty-five feet. So now suppose one of the properties is to be demolished. It now it's considered vacant, it's now fifteen feet. You calculate the average, and you get twenty-three feet. So in fact, the new property could be at twenty-three feet, and as Community Development points out, the distance difference is only two feet. However, suppose if three properties are going to be demolished, then in fact, you do the math, and now the average setback is nineteen feet. So these three properties now can be put six further towards the street than the properties that were existing at that time. And that is a big difference. So can three properties be demolished? In fact, here's a map of properties that have been demolished since nineteen eighty-two. That's when I moved to Urbana in the northern part of my neighborhood. And you see, there's plenty of instances where three properties have been demolished in a block. And here's the south part of that. Over here is the three properties in a row on Lincoln that were demolished. So certainly, three and even more properties in the block could be demolished. And then, of course, there are variances that can be allowed. And in fact, in a planning case memo, the number of variants and their approval indicates a flaw in the zoning ordinance that should be addressed. I find it curious that if there are too many variances, what you should do is not enforce their ordinance, but to to change it. So my recommendation is simple. The average setback should include all existing buildings. We should respect the character of the neighborhood. And specifically, it's this part of the zoning ordinance, and I would add, if a developed proposal includes demolished buildings, these lots should not be considered as vacant. I want to talk about what I call stickouts. So this here is five oh six West Elm. It is the poster child of Urbana zoning. Note the gorgeous building here, the gorgeous building there. There's some fifty feet that this thing sticks out. And there's another view from above. Here is the five oh six. It's actually about twenty-three feet from the street, so it almost satisfies the zoning ordinance. And here are these two buildings that are setback another maybe fifty feet or so. Here is an eight hundred block of West Main, which of course Alderman Jacobson understands.
You have one.
It's a hundred feet, a hundred feet, and these are now at thirty-five feet. So eight oh seven is completely masked. Eight oh nine, eleven, and thirteen stick out. So we've got what we call the stickout problem. So here's the average setback of existing buildings. And if the average is fifty feet, then the new building has to be twenty-five feet. But that means that the new building will stick out by twenty-five feet. All this, if the average is between fifty and twenty-five feet, the new building only has to be at twenty-five feet, so the new building, in fact, will stick out. I think we should address this because it just looks ugly. So the problem is that the zoning ordinance does not recognize specifics of a block or an area. More infill development is expected. Tear downs could happen. Combining of properties could happen. The one-size formula based on zoning district does not preserve neighborhood integrity. And I believe Community Development, the Plan Commission, and the Council should address this issue soon. I'd like to thank Kevin Garcia for providing me documents and neighbors that helped me with other information. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Bill?
Yeah, Paul, thanks. On the five oh six West Elm, I think you're aware that that couldn't happen under our current zoning unless they got some kind of variance because it looks like the actual setback there is, it's not from the street, it's from the property line, which would be on the other side of the sidewalk, so it looks like it's maybe five feet, maybe five.
Well, actually, it's eleven feet. So you could move it back fourteen feet, and that's still would stick out something like forty feet.
Yeah, from the existing houses that were there.
From the existing houses.
That would be the minimum, yeah. So that would go.
So I agree with your your math, but it is the poster child, I believe, of what's wrong with the zoning ordinance.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
I think, Dennis?
So, so of course, the the opposite argument is that property owners want to maximize the want to maximize the value of the properties. They want to build something as large as they can with with the footprint that they have available to them. And this becomes, I guess, really a question about neighborhood aesthetics, livability. What is your take on how to balance the interests of the property owner to enhance their income but still honor the neighborhood?
I think that's a very good question. I don't have a great answer. I do have the observation that there are a lot of properties coming down, and more will come down. So there really has to be a discussion about this. Whenever there are these new developments where properties will stick out, the seven hundred block of Green, the eight hundred block of Lincoln, you will find opposition, and sometimes massive opposition from the neighborhood, from the neighborhoods. And I believe that these these people should be heard.
Okay. I did want to point out that I believe it's the intent of the council to send the section of the omnibus zoning ordinance regarding setbacks and parking back to committee for further discussion. So that will not be voted on tonight.
I appreciate that.
So that so you're so there will be opportunities for more discussion.
Thank you for the time. I did email this to all members of the council and to.
Thank you.
Charlie Smythe. It can go in your record. I think my math is correct. If I'm willing to be corrected, thanks for your attention. If there are any other questions.
And there will be further discussion. Thanks.
Paul, I would never presume to question your maths.
Oh.
Patrick Thompson is up next. Is this Troy?
Yes.
Okay. And Troy Dean. Dean?
Yes.
Okay.
Five minutes, please.
Well, you each filled out a card, so yes.
Okay.
But you can always, you know, be briefer.
Okay, my name is Troy Dean. I'm an electrical contractor in Champaign. My business is based out of Champaign. It's called Magnet Maintenance Electrical, and I've been in business for probably about thirteen years. What I came to talk to you, to the council about is a piece I've talked to the Champaign Council about this previously. And it's it's about the MBE participation in like with public works and with the city of Urbana. And basically, the advantages that it bring to the community, you gotta excuse me, I ain't good at public speaking.
You're doing fine.
So basically, my trial, just from my experience in the trade, MBEs are more or less community-based companies. You look at MBE structures, you look at their company, because I've been on different sides of the facet, and most of you got your employees are community-based. MBEs tend to live in the community they work in, and they they get their manpower from the pool of the community of that community. And so we spend our money here, and we purchase our own property here in Urbana also. What I want to say, what is kind of missed in these cities is a lot of the infrastructure that's that's being built now, if you look at the contractors, even if you go to more the union contractors, the the people that are building the structures here in the community, for the most part, most of them don't live in the community. Most of the money is generated here, then it's sent out of the community. And one reason I'm, we kind of pushing an agenda of 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 community-based finance, keeping money in the community, building a stronger community. I, at one time, was a union bricklayer, and I'm just using this for example to kind of show you the dynamic of it. And I don't know what's going on in Morton, Illinois, but they have all the big brick companies that you see doing the work on the U of I come out of Morton, Illinois. And they, a lot of them go to the same church, and they all know each other, and they deal with each other. Now, I'm not accusing anybody of bid rigging or anything like this, nothing that way, but I'm just showing you how it's something going on in their community where they building up, you know, either someone's coming out of the company and building their company, and they're getting aid and assistance, but what they do, they're coming here, and then you got companies here. You know, when I, before I left Brickland, Kirby and Turner isn't really getting any work. We got Roach Masonry, and I'm not advocating for either one of them, but I'm just showing what's kind of happening. They're not doing it, but the Morton companies are doing. You got like Autobomb, JJ Breaker, River City. They're coming here, and they're doing, they're sucking all the money out of the community and taking it elsewhere. And I'm just, and I'm just saying a piece, I'm not saying this is the end-all, but I'm kind of trying to put a bug, maybe it can turn into a larger discussion, that if we concentrate on our community-based companies and minority-based companies are usually by nature, local companies, you know, maybe it could create something that, you know, in our community, keep our finances here, you know what I mean, instead of leaving the community. So.
Patrick?
Do I have any questions?
They're thinking. Go ahead. You have a question, Eric?
Well, so maybe it's a question for staff. When we do go out for bids and we evaluate bids, do we count whether or not contractor is local? How much of the cost to us will, you know, potentially come back in terms of sales tax, real estate tax, whatever?
So we do not have, is that working? We do not have a local preference ordinance in the city of Urbana. The city of Champagne does currently have a local preference ordinance that allows for a certain differential based on percent or dollar amount. And so, in their case, they might not necessarily take the low bid. In a formal bid situation, though, because we don't have that ordinance, normally, we're obligated to accept the lowest bid. There are some, like if we issue a request for proposals, the selection process is based on factors other than just price, and we can evaluate a whole host of factors as long as we disclose in the request for proposals what those factors are.
And so the champagne, is Champagne's local preference?
Is Champagne's local preference somehow formula-based? They make a money flow evaluation of how much it's worth to the city for the money to come back into the city economy?
Yes, they've modified it recently since I left there, but I believe it's still formula-based. The formula is just different than it used to be.
Bill?
Wait, Elizabeth, so we're getting a little off. On the city of Champagne, when is it only for businesses that are located in the city of Champagne, or in the county, or Champagne advantage?
That was part of what they changed recently, and I'd be happy to get you some more information there. It used to be that local was defined as within the county. I think the new, I believe the new ordinance gives additional preference to vendors who are located within the city of Champagne, then another level to vendors within Champagne County. So it's a more tiered approach. At one time, that was just strictly based on locations in the county.
Okay, thanks.
Well, Erin, did you have a question?
No.
No? Okay. Patrick?
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
Mayor, my name's Patrick Thompson. I am the president and owner of Via Inc., and we are located in Champagne, Urbana. We are a site concrete contractor. We are certified as a MBE firm with the Illinois Central Management Service. We are a DBE firm as well. I am here tonight to talk about a program. And last time I think I spoke with you guys was probably in 2012. I think Councilman Aaron had me come in, talk to you guys about a program. So that's been a long time. And so I am here again tonight to lay out a need for a program. As a MBE firm, we primarily do a lot of state projects, university capital development board, IDOT projects. Those are the type of projects that we work on. We are a union contractor, and we've been in business since 2009. And if it was not for those programs, then you would not probably have seen a construction company like mine in business. The program was designed with the understanding that minorities were left out of the construction process, the bidding process, the contracting process. And so that program has been in existence for some time now. It has allowed contractors like me to be able to bid as subcontractors on projects, construction projects. And when we, you know, as a business owner, and as a local business owner, you know, one of the things I've saw, you know, over the years, and it became more relevant to me as I became a business owner, is the economic development of Champagne, Urbana. I mean, I'm a lifelong resident here, and so I grew up here. And one of the things I've saw is, you know, we have a lack of black-owned businesses. You know, and, you know, we tend to not think, well, you know, having a business as an African-American is very important to the economy. It's important to the community. It provides jobs, opportunities for individuals. And when you don't, when an individual or someone does not see that, when you walk down Cunningham here, and you want to, you look, you know, none of those businesses are run by African-Americans. And so that's been probably one of the longest things, one of the longest historical problems that we've had. And as a business owner, you know, when we start talking about diversity, and we start talking about other issues, then economic development has to be one of your key importance to say, you know, we need to look at that, and we need to look at a program that will provide opportunities and provide opportunities to businesses because we know we've been historically at a disadvantage, you know. And so that has to be something that has to be, you know, consciously, everyone has to say, okay, well, this is, you know, as a local government body, you know, this is you guys' problem. And this is, and you guys have to say, okay, hey, we need to look at putting a program together. Now, Peoria has a program, Decatur has a program, Springfield has a program, Champagne is working on a program, the Champagne School District has a program. And so, you know, this is important for the community to say, you know, we have businesses. And I'm sure, you know, many of us probably can't even go somewhere and patronize African-American business. You know, so when you ask yourself, well, you know, if it's something that you need, or something that you want to buy, or something, you know, and you don't have a, you know, you would not be able to go somewhere and say, okay, I want to purchase this from an African-American business. Now, there may be some things you can, but on the bigger scale, no, you won't. So I'll leave it at that, and I will hope that this council can move in that direction of actually putting together a program so that we will be able to have contracting opportunities. Thank you.
Eric?
So maybe staff already knows this or has this in hand. It would be interesting to look at a list of cities in Illinois that have such programs that we could look at, especially small cities, you know, smaller cities like us. So I, yeah, I think, yeah, I think looking at examples would be good for us, but maybe staff already has this in hand.
Actually, I have them in hand. I've been collecting them. Erin?
So, of course, I've been talking about the minority participation goals since I was appointed. So it's been about a two-and-a-half-year process of trying to make sure that I understand the construction aspect of this, how it relates to public works, how it relates to economic development. And of course, I think we all share, and I think you have helped illuminate, both of you, the importance of the impact of local businesses. We saw this young man who came to speak tonight. He didn't know that a future employer was sitting behind him. I don't think he knew that, that he would have that opportunity. But you all have provided that type of business to create that outlet, which is an extension of safe streets and a vibrant community that you spoke about, Troy. And so I want to hear more about what the programs actually are in Springfield, Peoria, Decatur. I know that there was, I know what happened with Unit Four about participation goals. They had workforce goals tied to it as well as contract goals tied to it as well. And I have learned, and I think you all can maybe elaborate a little bit, on, it's one thing to have those goals and participation things up front. Like, we could pass something and say, hey, yeah, the city's going to have 20% participation goals on all contracts. Now, but there are hurdles still out there that we may say, yeah, well, we passed the ordinance that says, yeah, we have this. But what do we need to do to help the businesses actually get those contracts and are able to actually do that work? I think there's more to it than just passing the ordinance. So I wanted you all to talk a little bit about that.
Well, as part of the, you know, like I said, I've been certified as an MBE contractor through Illinois Central Management Service. So with that program, with that, the criteria to be certified is that we're getting vetted to see that we are a company, we can do the work, we have met the insurance requirements, the financing, and so that's what the requirements are. So that gives us someone, so it's a vetted for the contractors, you know, in order for them to be certified, they say, well, we've met these criterias. As far as the, their split goals, you know, their split goals, their, you know, I think with the school district, it's 20%, I believe. I think it's 12 MBE, 8 FBE. With the state, it's similar as well. The state has a 20% goal, but it's based upon the dollar amount of the project. The other thing that the state does, and IDOT does as well, IDOT program is, you know, their goals are based upon the number of contractors in this area. So if you have one or two, then their goals are going to be very, very zero to sometimes, you know, maybe 1% or 2%. And that's a, but there's also a compliance part to ensure that this contractor or I, the goals have been met, and that we're on the project, working, and that we're doing what we say we're doing. So they do compliance on the contracting, and they're doing compliance on the employee utilization. So you have to probably have some type of compliance. And mostly times, these are probably EEO officers or something that would, you know, go out and make sure that contractor is, and the subcontractor is saying they're doing what they say they're doing, and not some type of what they call pass-through or, so that's, I hope, is this answering your question?
You're giving me some of the basic requirements that a business would have to go through to be certified as a legitimate business. But let's say, for instance, you have companies here, as you talked about Morton, or you talk about some of the other majority-owned companies that have been doing business for 50, 60 years, and they are the ones, we doing business with them because we've always done business with them. What sort of position does that put you in as an African-American-owned business trying to bid on those jobs? How do you compete with that?
Well, you know, these firms have been around a long time, large firms, so they've been through, you know, third, fourth generation. So they're very large. They, you know, they have, you know, they have a lot of experience, staff, equipment, and financing. So if it's a project that's a $10 million project, well, they will be the only ones that will be able to bid on those large projects. Contractor like me or Troy, you know, we couldn't bid on a project that large because, I mean, it's unrealistic to think that we're going to be able to catch up to a firm that's been around for, you know, 40, 50 years. That's just not going to happen. I mean, it's like putting a fifth grader in the 12th grade. You know, you can't expect him to be able to do 12th grade work unless he's Einstein or he has a high IQ. But, you know, so you have to understand, you know, the thing that's out there now, and I think, you know, is the unbundling, the target market, the set goals and stuff, which allows us to bid those projects and allows us opportunities on those projects, or set aside, you know, where you got smaller firms that could bid those projects. So those are all things that, you know, there's programs out there, the state has a program, but at this point, I haven't saw a lot of set-aside projects with the state. But those are the type of programs and things that we can implement. So I hope I'm answering your question.
I think we're getting to some of it. I just, I know it takes a lot of time to understand the terminology, just when you come to council for the first time and learn all the different terminologies, EEO and unbundling and all that type of stuff. I understand that to mean that you break down a project, that $10 million project, so that $8 million goes to the larger firms, and there's $2 million left to the smaller firms to get going. But it takes time for other council members and other folks in the public or whoever to understand that process. And so, last thing for me, and then I'll let this go and let other folks chime in if they want to, but one of the things that we see when we break down, what I heard, what I know about the Unit Four contract was that there was particular workforce goals for, for instance, for African-Americans, right? As opposed to a basic MWBE or MBE, the word minority is all-inclusive, right? Of females, as well as veterans and African-Americans, various different racial ethnicities. And so I'm somewhat concerned about when we have a spirit of an ordinance or a law that is really designed to make sure that the African-American or Latino or Asian-American population is being reached, that it's not dominated by white females, for instance, who own, who get 85% of that money that's being set aside. And so I just want to make sure that we, I don't know if you all have any experience with that, to speak to some of those particular concerns.
I mean, you do see a heavy presence of FBE contractors, and, you know, you do see a heavy presence. So if you don't have some type of split, then you will continue to see a presence of FBE contractors. I mean, and it's a, so, you know, it's a disparity within a disparity, if you want to call it that. You know, so you do kind of see that, but I think the historical, you know, both, you know, African-Americans, minority female, they have been at a disadvantage. But at this point, you, I mean, because right now, you don't see any African-American, you don't see any African-American women or Hispanic women doing construction at all or owning construction companies. They're very few. You don't see them in the trades as much either. So there is a, you know, issue there with that. But I think to satisfy that, and what other cities have been doing is splitting the goals. And the state splits it, you know, so that's the option that's there if you want to say, okay, we want to include, you know, other, because right now, the state, they do include veterans. But I don't think you're seeing a lot of veteran contractors right now, but they are including them. So the split goal does allow that, and some other things if you want to. And the state splits it, you know, so that's the option that's there if you want to say, okay, we want to include, you know, other, because right now, the state, they do include veterans. But I don't think you've seen a lot of veteran contractors right now, but they are including them. So the split goal does allow that and some other things if you want to, you know, if you want to get into some other types of specific programs. But these programs, they have created opportunities for minority contractors. And so those programs, they've already been vetted. They have withstood the test and the program. And I think you, you know, you're going to probably see more and more people moving in that direction and, you know, to say, you know, to, based upon the population of what we're seeing, an increase in population and diversity. So I think that, in saying that, I think that a program like what you're seeing in Springfield, Decatur, Peoria, in Urbana, you know, is something I think that would be viable for the community.
Thank you. Given the fact that we have 12 action items on our agenda, I am going to say we'll end this discussion right now. But you and I have been in frequent contact. We've started collecting information from those cities. I think it's important that whatever we do is consistent with Champaign so that contractors can work seamlessly across the cities. And we are committed to expanding on our procurement, inclusive procurement efforts. So we are, we're going to move in this direction. And we have been, you and I have been in touch about meeting
Yes.
with other contractors as well to get started on this. So, thank you very much.
Make one other comment. I just want to make sure that as we talk about this, and like I said, I've been bringing this issue up for two and a half years, and it's an ongoing issue for us. So I'm very, very sensitive and skeptical of the notion that we're going to do something that is in conjunction with the City of Champaign because that means that we have to wait until they're ready to do something as opposed to us putting together our own program or policy and putting it out there for us to, I'm just...
Oh, I appreciate that. They're actually ahead of us on this one, so we'll be looking, we learn from other cities, so.
Well, learning from them is one thing, but saying that we want a policy that's the same as theirs so contractors can move seamlessly, in my experience, being on this council and watching city government, trying to make sure that we have something that is exact same as Champaign, is always a task and a half to make happen when we are in total control of putting forth our own program and policy in relationship to minority participation and not having to wait for them. We could put together our own thing, and then if it doesn't work or mesh with theirs, we could work to get it there, but to have to wait to put ours in until we on the same page with them, it's like all deliberate speed, and I don't think that's appropriate.
Well, I didn't say wait, but, point taken. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council.
We have one more member of the public who wants to speak, Martell Miller. And then we're ready to move on to business of the night.
Martell Miller, City of Urbana. It's been a great city council meeting tonight. I liked the microaggressing that y'all had here. I liked when the young man came up and spoke. And I really understand what he's talking about in school, especially in the reading part. Because me did not learn to read till I was 43 years old. I give thanks to Patrick on that. But I was pushed through school all the way up to the 12th grade, couldn't read at third grade level. I told my teachers, starting at sixth grade, "He handed me this and I can't read." And this would happen to me through public school here in Champaign. That's my story. But when we sit in rooms like this and this conversation come up, this is supposed to be a progressive city. And, like Erin said, y'all can do things on your own, and we need to do things to bring economic development to the African-American community. We had the things that took money from the African-American community. I've improved that. In the last two weeks, we're talking about the hotspot study. We, what, 14, 50% of Urbana, 65% to get stopped, and we get fined for it. That takes money out of our community. You know, so we have to look at this as a, I'm a Urbana citizen now. I was born and raised in Champaign. But I'm a Urbana citizen now, and I hope that y'all can look at what these young, these men said to y'all or what that young man said and put something in place. I ain't saying pretty quickly because I don't want you to mess up on, but just put something in place to make it happen. You know, don't just talk about it. Make it happen. I went to Champaign City Council, and I'm going to ask the mayor here today. We need to have a community summit here. We can't get a, what, a county administration? The mayor of Urbana need to call it, mayor of Champaign need to call it, and the county administrators need to call it. Four day, I'd say, no, three day. Take 15 things, come out with three things that we're going to sign. And one need to be economic development to the black community from both cities. Because when I growed up, I looked around and seen people working. These kids grow up, see people unemployed, and see people going to jail. They don't see what I see. And we can fix that. And plus, our schools are failing on both sides of the city. But they fixing up new schools, but ain't putting out good students. And that's something we really need to fix. And I'm going to both school boards, starting the first of the year. You know, we need to fix these schools up. We can produce good students too. We don't spend the millions of dollars on bricks and mortar and spend a million dollars getting good education. Have a wonderful day, evening rather.
Thank you, Martell. Two other members of the public submitted cards. They don't wish to speak. Bishop King James Underwood is continually concerned about the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer problem. And Eldress Melinda Carr has expressed continued concerns about Dr. Ellis sanitary sewer issues, equity, and historic impact. Okay, we're ready to move on to unfinished business, which is item E on the agenda. Resolution 2017-11-075R. This is a resolution the council passed by voice vote back on November 27th, but we learned afterwards that it required a roll call vote, so we're just going to redo that vote. Will the clerk please call the roll? Oh, we need a motion.
We need a motion. I move approval of resolution number 2017-11-075R.
I'll second.
And this is a resolution accepting the Ameren Energy Efficiency Staffing Grant in Sedent. So it was moved by Bill, seconded by Mary Alice. Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Ammons, Brown, Hazen, Jacobson, Miller, Roberts, and Wu.
Yes.
That motion passes. Reports from the Standing Committee. That was chaired by Alderwoman Mary Alice Wu.
On behalf of the Committee of the Whole, for Resolution Number 2017-12-076R, Resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Urbana and University of Illinois Hotspot Policing Study. On behalf of the Committee, I move approval.
I'll second.
Seconded by Roberts. Will the clerk please call the, any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
City Councilmembers Ammons, Brown, Hazen, Jacobson, Miller, Roberts, Wu.
Yes.
That motion passes.
Ordinance number 2017-12-070, an ordinance levying taxes for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2017, and ending June 30th, 2018. On behalf of the Committee of the Whole, I move approval.
Second.
Seconded by Eric. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Ammons, Brown, Hazen, Jacobson, Miller, Roberts, Wu, Mayor Marlin.
Yes. Mary Alice?
Ordinance number 2017-12-071, An Ordinance Directing the Champaign County Clerk to Abate the Tax Levy for the General Corporate Fund of the Tax Year Beginning July 1st, 2017, and Ending June 30th, 2018. On behalf of the Committee of the Whole, I move approval.
Second.
Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Jared. Will the clerk please call the roll?
City Councilmembers Ammons, Brown, Hazen, Jacobson, Miller, Roberts, Wu.
Mary Alice? Are we on 072? Thank you. Okay, they're all the same, sorry. Ordnance number 2017-12-072, An Ordinance Directing the Champaign County Clerk to Abate a Portion of the 2017 Tax Levy Related to General Obligation Bond Series 2012 and General Obligation Bond Series 2014. On behalf of the Committee, I move approval.
I'll second.
Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Dean. Will the clerk please call the roll?
City Councilmembers Ammons, Brown, Hazen, Jacobson, Miller, Roberts, Wu, and Mayor Marlin.
Yes. Item E.
Ordinance number 2017-12-073, An Ordinance Revising the Annual Budget Ordinance for Fiscal Year 2017, 2018. Budget Amendment Number Five, Omnibus. On behalf of the Committee, I move approval.
Second.
Okay. Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Erin. Will the clerk please call the roll?
City Councilmembers Ammons, Brown, Hazen, Jacobson, Miller, Roberts, Wu, and Mayor Marlin.
Yes. Item F.
Resolution Number 2017-12-077R, A Resolution Establishing City Policy on Sexual Harassment is Mandated by Five ILCS 43075.
I'll second that motion.
Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Jared. Will the clerk, is this a roll call? Clerk, please call the roll.
City Councilmembers Ammons, Brown, Hazen, Jacobson, Miller, Roberts, Wu.
Yes.
That motion passes. Item G.
Resolution Number 2017-12-078R, A Resolution Approving Modifications to the City of Urbana and Urbana Home Consortium, Fiscal Year 2016, 2017, and Fiscal Year 2017, 2018. Annual Action Plans. On behalf of the Committee, I move approval.
I'll second.
Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Dennis. Will the clerk please call the roll?
City Councilmembers Ammons, Brown, Hazen, Jacobson, Miller, Roberts, Wu.
Yes.
That motion passes. Item H.
Resolution Number 2017-12-079R, A Resolution Approving the City of Urbana and Urbana Home Consortium, Fiscal Year 2018, 2019. Mini Action Plan. On behalf of the Committee, I move approval.
Second. I'll second that.
Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Jared. Will the clerk please call the roll?
City Councilmembers Ammons, Brown, Hazen, Jacobson, Miller, Roberts, and Wu.
Yes.
That motion passes. Last committee item?
This is I.
I.
Sorry, okay. Ordinance number 2017-10-064, An Ordinance Repealing Urbana City Code Chapter 17 and Amending Chapter 15 Regarding Garage Sales From City Council of the Whole on Two Occasions, on October 23rd and December 12th. On behalf of the Committee of the Whole, I move approval.
Second.
Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Eric.
Correction, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
It's 12/11/17.
Thank you.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
City Councilmembers Ammons, Brown, Hazen, Jacobson, Miller, Roberts, and Wu.
Yes.
That motion passes. Thank you very much. Reports of special committees. Reports of officers. Do want to remind the council and the public that this is the last meeting before the end of the year, and our next meeting after the new year will be January 8th. So there's a three-week break. New business is Resolution Number 2017-12-08R, which is the resolution to accept the Boneyard Creek Ecological Community Design.
So moved.
Mayor, we have to, we have the resolution on resolutions since this has not gone through committee, so.
Yeah, if I could have the floor.
Yes, Dennis.
I totally support the presentation that we received today from the students in the Los Landstake eight, Architecture 537 senior class or studio class. And I'd like to just accept that officially as part of the future planning for the Boneyard Creek. It's a great contribution to the concepts that we might eventually evolve for that. But to do that officially, I'd like to make this resolution. But to do the resolution in the city council meeting without having appeared before the Committee of the Whole requires a waiver of the resolution of resolutions which we've adopted as council practice. So I'd like to make a motion first that we waive the resolution of resolutions which requires it to go to the Committee of the Whole first.
I'll second.
Thank you so much.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, the resolution on resolutions has been waived.
And therefore, I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 2017-12-080R, which is a resolution to accept the Boneyard Creek Ecological Community Design as we've received it today.
I'll second.
So moved by Dennis, seconded by Jared. Any comments, discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Thank you all.
That resolution is approved. Thank you very much for your work on this.
We're getting started, and it's going to be exciting.
Next up is Ordinance 2017-12-074, which is the ordinance amending the zoning ordinance of the City of Urbana, Illinois.
So while Kevin's setting up, I just want to, if you didn't catch the email that was sent out earlier, there's a revised copy of the ordinance and the attachment is now, the strike-through attachment is part of that ordinance. It's a little cleaner legally.
And I wanted to, I should have mentioned this, that the revised ordinance that was provided by our planning division had an error in it in the very beginning because it didn't indicate, it said LA Master Design Class. It should read LA 537. That was omitted, and I just would like to make sure that we adopt that. So I prepared another copy with a yellow highlighted thing which makes the original correction but doesn't change anything else for the record.
Kevin Garcia?
Okay, good evening. So I'm going to try and keep this brief since the hour is getting late. So before you is a multi-part text amendment to the zoning ordinance. And we do these periodically to make changes that, in general, on their own, would not warrant a separate text amendment case, so we bring them forward in omnibus fashion. So you'll see in your packet and in the proposed change, or in the document of proposed changes, you'll see this is doing things like rewriting sections to make things, to make them more readable and more clear, revising and removing definitions, fixing certain errors and making other changes. In the staff memo and the exhibits that you have before you, those provide all the detail of the proposed changes which Plan Commission forwarded with a vote of six to one to recommend approval of those. So I'm not going to go into detail on most of these proposed changes, but I did want to go over two of the proposed changes as they seem to generate the most comment from the public and some comments and discussion at the Plan Commission meeting. So the first one of those is on, if you're following along in your memo, and this is on page seven, and it is number 23 under Article Eight, Parking and Access. And this is to simplify the parking requirements for multifamily dwelling units. And the current regulation for dwelling units essentially says you need half a space per bedroom with a minimum of one space per dwelling unit. And what we've, what this means in practice is that every single-bedroom apartment requires one space for each unit. And we did a, staff did a survey last year in which we got 187 responses for multifamily buildings in the campus area. And with the data and the evidence collected by that survey, we found that demand for parking... And with the, the data and the evidence collected by that survey, we found that demand for parking is actually less than half a space per bedroom. And as we discussed at the Plan Commission on, on December 7th, the proposed change that, that we're proposing would still allow developers in certain areas, you know, outside of the areas near campus, they would still be able to provide more spaces if they felt the market demanded it. It just would not be, be forcing additional spaces to be built in areas where there, where there's less demand. And as I mentioned, out of 187 apartment buildings, we found that the, the total parking demand by residents, so that's the, the number of residents that are leasing spaces or using spaces to the, to the number of bedrooms that, that are present, was, was .44 spaces per bedroom. And we included in that on-street parking permits that, that people from those buildings had also purchased. So we wanted to get a total demand and not just the demand for off-street or onsite parking. And when we, when we looked at supply, we found that only about 75% of all off-street parking that's provided is actually used. There's over, over 200 spaces in the building surveyed that are currently being unused. 10% of spaces are being leased to non-residents and 15% of the spaces are just not being used at all. So as a whole, it seems that there's an adequate supply of parking in the campus area. But since these numbers are aggregate, I, I do want to point out that there are certain blocks where there could be higher, or there's certainly blocks where there is higher demand for on-street parking. So I don't want to discount that. We did, in our survey, we also asked about single bedroom units specifically. So we were able to, when we, when we look at the data, we could look at buildings that contain single bedroom units only. We could also look at buildings that contain single bedrooms, or a mix of single bedrooms and multifamily bedrooms. We found that in buildings that contain single bedroom units only, the demand is, is just over .6 parking spaces per bedroom. And all these numbers are summarized in the, the table on page eight of your, of your council memo. We found interestingly that in mixed unit buildings, so buildings that have single bedroom units and other units that have multiple bedrooms, the demand was pretty much exactly the same as in buildings that only provide multi-bedroom units only. So looking at this data, we feel that, that the data really doesn't support requiring one space per bedroom for every single bedroom unit when the data are showing that, that the numbers are, are well below one space that's actually being demanded by residents in single bedroom units. So that in summary is, is why we're proposing to do, to reduce the, the number. And you could say, well, why not make it .6 spaces for each one bedroom unit? But that number is only an average of all the units. So some, some buildings have less demand for single bedroom units than, than that .6. And some have, have more than, more than that. So, but what we'd be doing with this change is we wouldn't be requiring parking to be over-provided for the ones that are under .6. And we'd still, again, be allowing them to, to put more spaces in if, if the demand, or if the developer thought the demand was there.
Could I ask a question before you go on?
Sure.
So the survey was on the campus area and I can kind of understand the lower demand there, but I've lived in like big apartments, or not big apartments, apartments with like 12 units or 24 units of all one bedrooms off-campus. It seemed like most people pretty much had cars for each apartment. So our ordinance doesn't allow any kind of spatial variation, does it? As far as like what's required, one place is also required in another place.
That, that's right. And yeah, for, for parking, we just have a blanket policy that covers the entire city. But when you're, when you're talking about minimums versus say maximums for parking, you're not taking away the option for, you know, for somebody, say, at, at Eastland Suites out by, out by 74 on Cunningham, you're not saying you can't build more parking. You're, but you're saying at a minimum, you need to build this amount and then it's up to the developer to say, I'm in a more auto-oriented area, I will build more parking because that, you know, because that's what my tenants are going to, to demand. And in a situation like that, they probably wouldn't be able to rent out units if they didn't, if they didn't provide one space per, per unit. But on the flip side of that, since we are talking about minimums, what, what a minimum does is say, well, you have to provide this much. So essentially, you're, you're making a policy citywide, which you're trying to include, include a policy for, for all units. But when you're saying that the minimum is one per, per bedroom or for single, single bedroom units, you're saying you have to provide more parking near campus when what we see is that the, the demand is just not there.
Okay. And then if you come out with a fraction, do you always round up or do you round at .5?
That's a good question. Yeah, any, any number of spaces is always rounded up. So if you did, you know, if you had, let's say, three units and you said it's .5 per bedroom or three one-bedroom units, it would be 1.5, you'd round that up to two.
Okay. And then just a comment, it can, I think in some areas that we probably, our minimums are too high, I'm thinking like Prairie, Prairie Green, it's a lot of three and four bedroom units, a little bit more low-income, where most of them really just have one car anyway. And I've been in that parking lot a number of times and I don't know what their occupancy is there, but I hardly ever see more than maybe 25, 30% of the parking lot full. So it seems like we ought to maybe have more flexibility or I don't know, I wasn't around or don't remember exactly when that was built, but it was a long time ago. I don't know if they requested a variance, but those kind of considerations should, should definitely be taken into consideration. Or encouraged.
Okay. Moving on to, to the next, let's see, to the next item I wanted to discuss. It's the, let's see, I think I skipped over it, okay. So back on, back on page five under number 17, we're talking about setbacks. And this, this is kind of a difficult issue to, to, to understand how the setbacks are calculated. And trying to put it into writing also is, is sort of difficult because you're, because you have a minimum required setback, but also a maximum required setback in residential districts. And when you're talking about, for instance, a, well, when you're trying to put, put into words what the difference is there, it can get difficult. But I've tried to explain it as, as well as I could in the memo. And I also want to, and I'm trying to explain what, what we're really trying to do with this change to the zoning ordinance. All we're trying to do is, we're not trying to change any policy, we're just trying to clarify how these setbacks are calculated and how they have been calculated since 1986. There have been a few times since, since I joined staff in 2014 when we've had to explain how we calculate setbacks in residential zones when a building is going to, or when there's a building that's, that's proposed to be demolished. And we rely on this, on, on the policy from 1986 that staff has been using since then, but it hasn't been codified anywhere. So all we're trying to do with this change is to add clarification so that the zoning ordinance is, is more understandable for folks and for us, for us as well, so we don't always have to look through our policy manual. So that is, so that's the, the change that we're proposing is just, would, would be adding a sentence that, that says that we use the minimum required for that district if a building is proposed for demolition. And, and this goes back to that 1986 policy that states that in calculating the average setback, the setbacks for lots to be redeveloped where demolition is anticipated should be calculated at 15 feet. At the time, the, the minimum setback was 15 feet in, in every district except R1. That is the same as today, we've added some more residential districts to it. But in most zones, you have this minimum of 15, well, it's a minimum between 15 and 25, and it's calculated based on the average setback for all other buildings on the block. I provided some examples in, in the memo on page six. I think I, I made a typo on table two. On the, the far bottom right, it's supposed to say that the required setback would be 23 feet, not 25 feet. So I apologize for that. But in these tables, I tried to show some examples that are, are pretty realistic. I know in one of the, one of the examples that Mr. DeBevick provided in his communication to the Plan Commission showed the building Kohler Crossing, which is at Green Street and Kohler. And that situation is very similar to, to what I've laid out in table one in the memo. So if you have, if the setback of all the buildings on a block is greater than 25 feet, you calculate the average setback, but then you still have to say the, the maximum setback in that district is 25 feet. So it still goes to, to 25 feet. So it doesn't matter that all the building, all the other buildings are set back so much further. The maximum that our zoning ordinance can say is it needs to be 25 feet. So in table one, which I can pull up really quickly, I'm sure you all have it in front of you as well. It, it just shows an example of, oops, did I not pull that up? Oh, you know what, I don't have the memo here. Well, I hope you all have it in front of you, I apologize for, for not having the electronic copy here. But what it shows is that calculating the, the setback using the, the first example in table one, which would be using the existing building setback, you get the same result as if you calculate it the way that we've been calculating it for the last 30 years. And then if you go down to, to say the minimum in, in table two, if everything is set back 25 feet, so what the, the maximum setback we can require would be, even if every building is set back 25 feet, when you calculate it the way that we've been calculating it, there's a difference of two feet. So we don't feel that, so the, the difference is not very extreme. And I think, I think the idea, and I think that something that Mr. DeBevick and, and others have pointed out is that perhaps there is a need to, to reevaluate our rules on setbacks because it doesn't appear that the, this, between 15 and 25 feet, that doesn't seem to, to be, to be working in certain, in certain areas. And the, the change that we're proposing to the zoning ordinance isn't going to help that in one way or the other. We were just trying to, to clarify this. But I think by the, by the vocal response we've heard, I think it's, it would be something we'd be, we'd be happy to explore in the future. And so I will, I can, I think, leave it at that. I don't think there was any, any other things that we've proposed that, that need further explanation besides what's in your memo, but I can answer any questions if you have them. And that concludes my, my report.
Mary Alice?
I'd like to make a motion that we remove the areas for the front yard setback and the parking changes from this ordinance to be set back to the committee of the whole for January 22nd.
I'll second.
Me too.
Me too.
Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Bill, any discussion?
Yeah, Mayor.
Yes.
Actually, that's sort of an amendment to what's there. More in order, what would work easier for everyone, I think, would be to move the ordinance as presented, deleting the two sections and sending those to committee.
Okay, can I amend my motion?
Yes.
So I guess I move approval of the ordinance number 2017-12-074 and deleting the two sections, one for the front yard setback and the parking changes.
Those are highlighted in yellow or shaded.
I'll second that.
Well, we have a second or.
Oh, you already had a second.
I'll still second.
He'll still second it.
I thought it was a new process.
Any discussion on this? Dennis?
Yeah, I think that some real good issues were brought up about the setback question. I will tell you that the reason why the historic Easterbanna Neighborhood Association was created was that there was a demolition of a cottage on a corner of Elm Street and Grove. And we found that all of a sudden a five-plex was being built there and that the, there was a, apparently a waiver of the setback for the, the east side of the building, or no, it was the front of the building, the north side of the building, that totally changed the character of that block, we felt. And we were concerned enough to create a neighborhood association. So people do have strong feelings about setbacks and appropriate alignment of the buildings on a block. And when you do get a situation where you're having a demolition, I don't think that it allows, I don't think it should allow, and I don't think the city council should permit it to become like free-form and, and automatically allow a construction to occur with the minimum setback, totally ignoring all the other setbacks on the block that have existed there historically. What we want to do is we want to have new construction that's appropriately placed and positioned and really, I would say, designed to fit in with the, the neighborhood, the neighboring buildings. And just because it has been a policy for like 20 years doesn't mean it's correct, and here's an opportunity to make the correction. So I totally agree with Mary Alice Wu's desire to have this relooked at.
Any other comments? Eric?
Yeah, I'll just say, my neighborhood's probably a special case, but if you look from north of Springfield, south of University, east of Lincoln, and then that is forms a wedge to going downtown, every parking space on those streets is taken all day, every day. So if, so we, we, and, and it's to the extent, although people are parking legally, it actually does create traffic hazards with respect to visibility at intersections. So I don't know how that exactly fits in to this overall parking thing, except that maybe, maybe this suggests that there shouldn't be one-size-fits-all for the entire city. That perhaps there should be areas where the off-street parking requirement is different as compared to other areas.
Any other comments, observations? Will the clerk please call the roll?
So this is the motion as indicated by Kevin with the two deletions?
I think they're also included forwarding those two items to committee of the whole on January 22nd.
Yes.
Sending those pieces. Yes. Oh, January 22nd would be the, yeah, okay. Just write that down. Okay, city council members. Okay, City Council members, Ammons. Brown.
Yes.
Hazen.
Yes.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
And Wu.
Yes.
That motion passes. Last item on the agenda are three appointments to boards and commissions. I'd like to nominate Danielle Chinowith to serve on the Champaign County Housing Authority for the term ending August 31st, 2021. For the Sustainability Advisory Commission, the term ending June 30th, 2020, test by Wolda Medhin. And then for the Urbana Library Free Board, for the term ending June 30th, 2020, Barbara Bennett.
I'd like to make a motion to approve both of those, or do we have to do them separately, right Charlie? Okay.
All three of those?
I will motion all three, I'm sorry, I missed the.
I'll second that.
Okay, moved by Jared, seconded by Eric.
One comment?
Yes.
Boy, am I glad to see an active and engaged individual be appointed to the Champaign County Housing Authority. Boy, oh boy, that groups need a shot in the arm for a long time, and I think they're going to get it. Maybe even a kick somewhere else.
Well?
So we support that appointment?
I should say, before we vote, I wanted to recognize the service of Mark Neder, who is stepping off the library board. He's served on the board for, how many years, so long? His first four years, and of course, on the school board before that, and the community owes him a great deal for the service that he's provided us over the years. So many thanks to Mark Neder for his service. So, we need a roll call, or a voice vote. All those in favor of these three appointments, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. That motion passes. No further business before this body, this meeting is adjourned, and Happy New Year, everyone.